The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA 7 or Spectrum.
I'd like to call this school board meeting to order, work session, and we'll start with roll call. Beth, if you could help us out?
Absolutely. Becker?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Sit Nakow?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Gandon Huba?
Here.
And Warren?
Here.
All right, all seven board members are present. With that, I would entertain a motion to go. Anybody?
I'm pulling it up. All right, I can read it. All right, I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to a potential property acquisition. The board may return to open session to vote on items discussed in closed session. The board will reconvene an open session at 6:00 PM pursuant to section 19.852 Wisconsin statute to consider the balance of the work session meetings. The first portion of the meeting will be an open forum. In-person public appearances are suspended until further notice. Members of the public may speak during open forum or provide written comments in accordance with the procedures posted on the district's website and state law. Board may reconvene in closed session after the conclusion of the work session meetings for such reasons noted in this posting and pursuant to a proper motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hi.
Beth?
I'm Smith.
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Gandon Huba?
Hi.
Sit Nakow?
Hi.
Becker? McCoy?
Hi.
Shelton?
All right, past 7:00, we will reconvene in closed session. See you at six. If I could have a motion to go back into open session?
I move that the board reconvene in open session pursuant to section 19.852 Wisconsin statutes to consider the balance of the agenda. Second?
Beth?
Shelton?
Here, hi, sorry.
Smith?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Gandon Huba?
Hi.
Sit Nakow?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
And Becker?
Hi.
All right, past 7:00, we go back into open session. We started off at 5:00 by taking roll calls. All seven board members are present. We're also joined by two members of the inner-city student council. Ian Hop from Preble High School is here, and shortly will be joined by Luke Pizzani, formerly of Southwest High School, a recent graduate. We're also joined for the first time by our new superintendent, Steve Merly. So Steve, welcome to the Green Bay School District. We're excited to have you.
Excited to be here.
And also members of Steve's family. So that's everyone who is present, and we'll have some people presenting later on. First thing on the agenda today is open forum. We have three people who are registered to speak who are going to call in. Josh, are you able to assist with bringing in Mr. Weber?
Sure, I'm dialing right now. Call's been accepted.
Mr. Weber, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Thank you for joining us. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then after that, you have five minutes to address the board.
Okay, my name is Martin Weber, and I live at 3307 Beach Lane in Green Bay. And the reason I wanted to address the board, I did submit data or studies on the Agenda Manager over the weekend. But anyway, my comments are that, you know, while schools are contemplating whether or not to open up, I just want to say that, you know, obviously from a learning standpoint, we need to get kids in school, not only for the learning, but for the emotional, the mental, social, and their physical well-being. It just, working, you know, the online at home is just not good for their health. And now I've been reading more and more where there's been issues of depression, isolation, many emotional issues. I mean, we've got 50 million kids in this school, or in this country, that a lot of them aren't doing well because of this shutdown. And if we don't open in the fall, there's going to be a lot more. There are studies now coming out that are saying that the online or remote learning didn't work, okay, or didn't work as expected. Let me put it that way. One of the things that we all need to keep in mind is that, one of the studies that came out, as of June 27th, five times more kids aged 1 to 14 in this country died, or five times more kids died of the flu than COVID-19. In other words, 150 kids died of flu, of the flu, and only 29 of COVID. So I guess the question is, why aren't we panicking more over the flu? And one other thing I'd like to say, and I've presented this, we have another worldwide pandemic, okay, tuberculosis. It's killed 1.5 million people, or it has every year, okay? We don't have lockdowns, we don't have social distancing or masks, none of that. Schools aren't closing. Why is that? Why are we doing this with the schools? It just, it can't be done. It's just, the kids need to be in school. And as far as teachers are concerned, granted, you know, they're concerned for their health, but you know what? In all professions, there's risks. Construction workers have risks, truck drivers have risks, doctors and nurses take risks. Everybody in their careers takes risks. And, you know, it's, again, we have 50 million kids in this country that need to be in-person learning. So I appreciate your consideration, and I hope you guys do the right thing come fall. Thank you.
Excuse me, quickly before he hangs up, I have a clarifying question.
Sure.
For Martin. Thanks for speaking to the board tonight. I'm interested in the, you said tuberculosis killed 1.5 million people every year. Can you tell me where I can find that?
Yeah, let me land here. Let's see here. I believe the World Health Organization has that information, but it's very easily Googled. I mean, it's, let's see here, let me see if I can find a quick link. Bear with me.
Martin, if you can find it now, you can always email us the link afterwards.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll do that, but you know what? Like I said, it's very easily Googled.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you for calling in, Mr. Weber. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
All right, second participants. Josh, if you want to get Ms. Kroll on the line.
Okay, we are dialing Ms. Kroll. Call has been accepted.
Ms. Kroll, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Hi.
Perfect. Thank you so much for calling. You've got the entire board here, along with Superintendent Merly and some of his staff. If you would start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes to address the board.
Sure. My name is Dr. Becky Kroll. My address is 1700 Royal Crown Court in Green Bay, Wisconsin. Thank you for your time this evening. I just want to start by saying I don't envy the position that you're in by any means. What I've expressed again and against the board members is that now is a time for leadership, and although it's an incredibly unprecedented time, now is the time that your voice, and quite frankly, the voice of the people that you represent, need to be heard. I am a parent of two in the Green Bay Public School System. One is 10, and she'll be going to fifth grade. One is 12, he'll be going into seventh grade. I could sit and tell you all the things that you've already heard on both sides, I think, of, you know, what this virus is doing and not doing in statistics, but I really want to come to you today as a parent. There's a lot of emotion behind this. But in short, my children want to be back in school. They were abruptly pulled out of a situation that they really want to be back into. I quite honestly have to tell you that unless that situation looks like what they were taken out of, I will not be sending my kids back to the Green Bay Public School System. We will be finding alternatives. On top of that, my concern is if we are not back in our buildings in a five-day fashion or utilizing the buildings, as a taxpayer, I'm quite concerned what that means and what I'm paying for. It also means teachers who are not working the hours that we are contracted for. It concerns me what my taxes are paying for. So the final thing, because I don't want to take up a lot of time for you tonight, I know you have big discussions and decisions to make, is all that I ask is that we make a decision in a timely fashion. It is extremely disappointing to me that we are now in the middle of July, and I have no idea what is happening to my children in September. By the end of the month, those are the deadlines for open enrollment, and I have opened enrolled to other schools, knowing that this decision was not going to come in a timely fashion. So I need an answer, and I need an answer by the end of the month. And if it doesn't mean that my kids are in school in five days a week, then my children won't be in the Green Bay Public School System anymore. I very much thank you for your time this evening, and again, prayers to all of you. I do not envy the decision you have to make, but again, as leaders, I'm counting on you to make the decision for our children. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. I appreciate you calling in. All right, and Josh, we've got one more. Mr. Jensen?
Yep, working on that. Okay, that is dialing out. Call's been accepted.
Mr. Jensen, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. Thank you very much for joining us. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes, five minutes to address the board.
Sure. I'm Edward Jensen. I live at 541 Alpine Drive, Green Bay. Want to say, welcome to the new superintendent. I'm sure sometime we'll, we'll discuss something or talk or whatever. Now I got another call, and I'm trying to get rid of that, can't get rid of it. No, the reason I wanted to address the board tonight is that I had a question concerning the package of pay and, you know, salary and benefits and everything for the new superintendent. As a member and director of the Brown County Taxpayer Association, I feel that sometimes that needs to be asked, and I asked and only received a response of what the salary is, and that's $220,000 a year. But I know there's much more than that involved. And I guess I've been told I will get that answer by the end of the week, but I was kind of surprised by the fact that when I asked it again, that it has to be run through your corporate council to see if you can give me that information. I mean, what about the transparency of government? Isn't, isn't government supposed to be open to the citizens so that if we have a question about the finances, we should know everything we want to know? And I'm just a little bit kind of wondering about that. Are we trying to hide things or not let the public know? I mean, you know, I've had discussions with many board members over the years about the pay package of superintendent, and, you know, I'm always told, well, if we don't pay that much, we won't get good candidates. And that's a cop-out, in my, in my view. I mean, $220,000 a year, you know, you can ask every student that comes in on the first day of school to bring $10. That would, that would go a long ways towards that, you know, but that doesn't take care of the whole thing. So, you know, I mean, we don't pay the governor of the state that much money. And I know as far as in education here in Brown County, I'm sure that the superintendents and the chancellor and the president of NWTC are some of the highest-paid, tax-funded salaries in Brown County. You know, and people need to know that, so I think it should be out there so people know this is exactly what we're paying for and how much we're paying. And that's it.
Melissa, do you want to just clarify Mr. Jensen's question?
Mr. Jensen, this is Melissa Field Coller. I am the district's legal counsel. When Ms. Jones spoke to you today, she, she indicated that she wasn't sure when we could get it to you, but it would be by the end of the week. And there is no issue with getting you the contract. It is a public record, and we will get you the contract. There's just a few things on our plates right now. And as soon as I can get my assistant to get that out to you and get your email, we'll be able to get you that contract. But we absolutely value transparency, and Mr. Merly, I think I don't want to speak for him, but understands his contract is a public record, so I, that should not be an issue to get you that information.
Okay. Well, I look forward to hearing from you.
Thanks very much for calling, Mr. Jensen. Appreciate it.
Sure. Okay.
Bye-bye. All right, I believe that wraps up our open forum. Unless anything else came in at the last minute. If not, that takes us to the teaching and learning portion of our work session, and tonight that's going to be facilitated by Brenda Warren.
Thanks, Eric. And I understand that there's some need to reorder our agenda. Is that right?
I'd ask if we could take a couple items out of order, only from a courtesy standpoint. We have a couple of guests with us to deal with item B, which is the fall academic eligibility requirements, and then item E, which is the Head Start Program. And while certainly the reopening of the Green Bay schools, as we consider the fall as our first and most paramount of importance issue for tonight, out of respect for the folks that have given up their time to come to our meeting tonight, I would ask you consider taking B and E out of order so that we may allow them to present and then step out of the meeting.
All right, so I guess we'll entertain a motion to reorder the agenda as described. Again?
Did we need a motion first?
Yeah, we need a motion first.
I wouldn't, I would move to reorder items B and E on the agenda.
And then Rhonda, you're seconding that?
Yes.
Yes.
Brenda? Historically, the president hasn't made those motions.
No, sorry.
That's okay.
Just trying to be efficient.
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you.
Hey, I move we change the order on B and E on the agenda.
Great job, Dawn.
Thank you.
We need another, yet another second.
I think Rhonda asked the second for the third time.
Second. All right.
Thank you, Rhonda.
All right, Beth will take roll call vote.
Okay, Becker?
Hi.
Sit Nakow?
Hi.
Smith? Gandon Huba?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
And McCoy?
Hi. All right, carried 7:00. So we will start with fall academic eligibility requirements. I assume that's Tim Flood that's
Yes.
part of the presentation?
Yes, so thank you for, for letting us take these out of order, and our fall academic eligibility requirements are something that obviously is in play right now as we are starting the season off, and we'll have students on campus as part of those programs in the very near future. We had some recommendations that have come to us about options that we have to enhance our students' experiences this fall. That does require some board action. Tim's going to walk you through that and explain what we would like you to consider, give you an opportunity to get some questions asked and answered, and see if we can take some next steps on that. So, Tim, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you. The WIA this year made a recommendation or passed, the Board of Control passed, that they would waive the fall academic requirements for the fall sports if it's approved by the school board. Currently, the, our Code of Conduct says that two F's require, is ineligible. But with what happened in the spring, the WIA made that motion. I'm just asking that we recommend that we waive the initial fall academic requirements until our first is a post, posting of grades or progress reports. So that, that's my recommendation. I apologize, I, I, I sent a memo and I didn't print it out to you, so I didn't speak very eloquently. So questions that the board may have about that, in terms of what we're looking at, in terms of allowing our athletes some latitude as they move into the fall sports season? Yes, why would they have to lower the, you know? Why would they have to waive the grade eligibility requirements? Why would we have to waive? Because it's a, it's a district, it's a board policy. So the WIA can only pass that. They have that in their, in their constitution that we have to follow. And the board has to, has to pass that if we go forward, because it's a board policy. The code, the curriculum, co-curricular is a, Code of Conduct is a board policy. That's a great question, though. So the WIA sets some requirements for participation. The board then passes some policy that complies with those WIA requirements. In this case, the WIA has changed their requirements, but our board policy was written in response to the original WIA protocol. And so in order for us to allow those students to participate, we then actually have to make an allowance within our policy to give the students the latitude that the WIA is granting across the state. Eric?
Tim, is the, the intention here to not penalize any students who may have had an F last spring? And then COVID shut down, and maybe they were adversely affected and not able to get their grade back up? And so then this is to not punish them for that time they were out? Is that the intention of this request?
That, that's correct. Currently, how the fall academics eligibility works is you take your final transcripts from your second semester, and you apply those. And, you know, then if you have two F's, you have an opportunity in summer school to make up an F, and all those different things that happened. And I had emailed the WIA way back in April, or May was, about the situation, asking for relief because of, you know, different situations, the different variables that the students are, were involved in at their homes. So we wanted to make sure that we had that relief. And they did, they did pass that in the Board of Control.
And then just to clarify, that would only apply until the first grading period, and then once grades were posted, if there were F's again, then we would go back to the old policy?
Correct. Yep, it's just the initial, initial fall grading academic period, and then we would waive that first one, and then the first progress report would be the one we would check for grades.
Andrew? And then Christina?
So I'm, I support the, I support the waiver. It, it makes the most, it makes sense, and there's no, there's no downside to, to doing this waiver. However, there were no F's, correct? If our board policy, if, if the board directive was followed for grading, there might be, there would be some letter grades, some pass, and some no-grade COVID-19. Is that correct? Any F that was given would either have been in error or unauthorized, correct?
No, but the, the grade they had the day that we closed was their grade. And so they couldn't get any worse than that grade, but if they had an F, they could try to improve that grade. Isn't that, isn't that right?
I thought, I thought we said there were going to, that there would be no F's, though. If you had an F and you didn't improve it, you would get no credit in the form of a no-grade COVID-19. That was the, so, I mean, I still say, let's do, do the waiver. It avoids any, it avoids any confusion. We don't have to worry about those. But, but there, there better not be F's on report cards because we said there, we weren't doing that. We were doing something different this, this semester, so.
Christina? Oh, just tell me why. Steve?
I was just going to offer, so with that input, I, I think the proposal provides an insurance policy in case we have anything that transpired that perhaps did not conform to the board's wishes at that time. And then I think we can easily get into the system and do an audit and do a search, and determine whether or not there were any F's.
And Andrew, I just wanted to add, having worked closely on this, on the data side of things, under the board policy, it would have been possible to have an F if the parent chose to give the kid an F. But it would have been defaulted to a no-grade COVID. It would have only been the active selection of, of the letter grade by the parent that would have resulted in an F, and I don't know if any such situations exist, but it was a possibility.
Okay, so I, I, okay, we have to go back and reread that. I thought that, I thought that any F's were just a no-grade. And then if you, okay, but that's, that's for another time. Thank you.
I might have missed this. I'm curious, when you talked to the WIAA, did they have a, do they have a plan to revisit this depending on fall rates of infection for COVID? Or where do they stand on where this goes next?
With the academic eligibility?
Correct. Like if we have to go back to Correct. Like if we have to go back to all virtual, right? And then we come, we come back. I mean, have they talked about navigating that moving forward? Or is that really not been on the table yet? They're just taking it one time and one day at a time?
Yeah, they haven't, no, they have not talked about that right now. They've, they've given us guidelines for July. They've given us some sport-specific guidelines to reopen fall sports. They have not talked about that yet at all.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Rhonda, could I just make one comment? Sure. Tim reached out to me in the spring or summer, I, I can't remember now, the days all blend together. But asking me this question about what we were gonna do for fall academic eligibility. And I said, I don't know. I think we need to contact the WIA. Tim did that and he made this proposal that we'd be able to waive this. So I just wanna give Tim a, a big shout out for bringing this to the WIA's attention and making sure that our kids are not harmed in what happened last spring.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions or comments, we'll move that forward to our next, the next board meeting next week. So next we're going to the Head Start Program State Support and Grant.
And there is an application that is attached to this agenda on the Agenda Manager. I give you an opportunity to take a look at that. And I, I believe Anne is gonna be handling that. So Anne, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. The, the document that you are referred to for the Head Start is a grant that we receive on a yearly basis from the State of Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. The funding allows us to add to our federal grant and serve an additional 15 children and families for the school year. It's a non-competitive grant. It's money that we see, we receive yearly. However, there is always, there's always some paperwork to do for the grant process. So it, it does not change our services. All the students receive the same services, whether they're funded through the state or the federal grant. And the dollar amount for the grant is $113,883. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Dan. I know this is something we've done every year.
Every year.
And it's, we're always grateful for the extra money to be able to serve more kids.
Yes.
Seeing no questions, I will move that forward to our meeting, regular board meeting next week.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, so then we'll return back to our, the order of our agenda. So we'll start, go back to A, which is reopening Green Bay schools.
Oh, it looks like Josh, I think as the host, you might have to enable my sharing on my screen. It says disabled on here.
Just made you a co-host. Does that help?
There we go. We're ready to roll. Thank you. All right, let me. It's our agenda. And I'd like to walk through this slide deck, which tells you a little bit about the work we're doing right now. Give you a chance to get some questions asked and answered. And more than anything else, perhaps lay out a timeline so you understand both the work that we're doing and, and when and how we expect to come back to you with additional information. So I, I've got you on small pictures on the side of my screen, so I can't see everybody. So if you have a question as we're going through here, please do not hesitate to interrupt me. And I certainly try to ask or answer questions as we move forward. And then I provide plenty of time at the end to provide some follow-up for you. So as we walk through here, the vision that we are using to guide the work that we're doing is to recognize that, as we heard from a couple of our community commenters at the beginning, that we want to make sure that all of our kids are receiving a high-quality instruction and that our school communities, both as a whole, as a district and, and at the school and the classroom level, remain healthy and remain connected to each other. We've got several guiding principles that we're using to organize this work. You can see that on the, the upper left-hand corner there. First and foremost, we want to make sure that our students and our staff are safe and healthy as they consider what opportunities we have for them to participate in school in the fall. Equity is front and center for us. We know that there were challenges in the spring. You hear about that across the country, across the state. We know we experienced some of that here in Green Bay. And we want to make sure that all students are able to equitably participate in the education that we provide for them this fall. Continuity of learning is incredibly important for us. We want to make sure that our students are able to finish this year on grade level. And that may mean that we need to close some gaps from the last school year to this school year. Continue to work on closing achievement gaps that exist for students before they got to March 13th of last year. I, on that bottom row there, flexibility is going to be one of the most important asks that we have to use aboard of our staff, our students and families and the community as a whole. One of the things that, that we know is that things change on a regular basis. And that may be the only constant that we have in the situation that we face right now. I reminded the leadership team when we met and talked about this earlier today that we have a few short weeks to prepare for the start of the school year. But if you think about it from the standpoint of where are we going to be in two months? But then turn around and look backwards in the rearview mirror and say, where were we two months ago? There's been an extraordinary amount of change over the last two months. And so we can anticipate that things will change between now and the start of the school year. And the change will continue after the school year gets started. And then finally, communication. We need to make sure that we are accurately communicating to you as a board, to our staff and to our parents. I think one of the things that we heard from one of our community commenters today was absent communication that helps them understand the details. That creates anxiety and fear. That uncertainty makes it hard for them to make good decisions about educating their kids. And so we want to make sure that we are helping them do a better job with those types of decisions. We're not doing it in isolation. This is just a snapshot of some of the folks that we are working with. You know about the DPI's Education Forward Plan, so we're using that as a guideline for us. But we're also looking to healthcare professionals. So you can see the Wisconsin Department of Health, we're working closely with Brown County Public Health. If you drop down a couple, you see Bell and Previa and Bay Care. They've been instrumental in the conversations that we're having collectively across Brown County. We're taking advice from the CDC, from the American Academy of Pediatrics. And then down there at the bottom, you can see that we're working with other superintendents across Brown County to better understand what our neighbors are doing, the issues that we're facing. Hopefully have the wisdom of the crowd there with folks from the area school districts. And then also recognizing the role that we play in the greater chamber and community collective here in Brown County and understand the role that we play as businesses seek to get their economy restarted. What are we working on in terms of that work with the Brown County Superintendents? Well, we're looking for some level of consistency from district to district and from school to school. We've been getting some wonderful guidance on those first three. What does effective screening look like? We're piloting some of that right now, both with staff as we come into the building. And I'll borrow Melissa's term, big shout out to our tech team and those folks that developed the screening tool that we have. It's on our app right now. It's something I use every day. So it's an easy process for me to provide some answers to questions that we're able to dump into our database. And if necessary, we can do contract, contact tracing off of that. But we're doing that on a small scale right now. What does that look like in the fall when we've got potentially 20,000-plus students coming back in and 3,000-plus employees coming back into the district? And so we're working on those screening protocols. From a testing standpoint, there are a lot of questions out there about what happens when we suspect that students or staff may have come into contact with people who may be infected? And how do we go about getting that testing done? What's the rate of return for that from a time standpoint? And then how do we react to it? Because that quarantining question in the end is really gonna have a significant impact on us as we come back to school in the fall. What does it look like in individual classrooms? What does it look like in the school as a whole? One of the, the key components of that is what is an event? What is an outbreak is the terminology that they're using? And so what does that look like? Is that a student, multiple students, staff? Is that one classroom? Is that a building? And so we're still seeking advice on that. We hope to get clarification from the medical team that's providing advice to us here in the very near future. We know mask wearing has been incredibly contentious. I know just in the past couple of days, we've seen Milwaukee Institute some mask requirements. Madison has it in place. We're seeing states around the country, Michigan, Louisiana stepping up on this. So questions that we've been debating in this group. Who wears masks? What kind of masks do they wear? Can you require kids to wear masks? How does that work? And so we're again attempting to get some greater clarification and then hopefully also some unanimity among the districts in Brown County. You heard from Tim that we're looking at the role of athletics and in terms of who gets to participate. I think it's important for you to know that although we talk about fall athletics, their season starts early. And so we're already looking at student athletes who are looking to get back on campus as the, the first official day of practice starts for various teams. That does give us an opportunity to work through some of the issues that I just described and make sure that our plans are functional. So athletics is gonna be a key component to us from an early learning standpoint. Transportation and nutrition, opportunity to shine a little light here on some of our staff. So Pete and Lynette both had the opportunity to present to our Greater Brown County Superintendent's Group. I think Pete told me that the school nutrition presentation has been the most requested one from all the presentations that have been delivered so far. Testament to her work. From a transportation standpoint, many of you may have heard that the CDC has talked at length about only being able to put 12 kids on a bus. Logistically, we know that that's not possible. There simply aren't enough buses on the market for us to purchase in order to transport kids at that rate. And so we've been working with our other Brown County peers to determine ways to transport students that both protect their health and safety and also allow us to get kids back and forth to school. From a nutrition standpoint, we're considering where kids eat. We're used to kids eating in cafeterias. Obviously, it's very difficult to socially distance in a cafeteria. However, you start feeding kids in their classroom, you wind up with other issues, whether those are operational from the standpoint of cleanup and sanitation or whether they have to do with supervision and the role of teachers in the classroom. So that's just a quick overview of the main areas that we're looking at from district to district, school to school, classroom to classroom across Brown County as a whole. And I, they're not on the call, but I'd like to express my appreciation of the Brown County Superintendents for stepping up and doing this work as a collective. It's allowed us to leverage some resources that individually went out of head access to, whether that's the doctors that are, are meeting with us on a regular weekly basis and the, the work that they're doing on behalf of the kids. The ability that we've had to work with Wisconsin and Brown County Departments of Public Health. I think it's a testament to the, we're all in this together type of idea that we've gotten all these superintendents and school districts together to work on this collectively. So that brings us to what we're doing inside the group or inside the district. And we have convened a set of district work teams. Important to, to spend just a minute before we talk about the teams themselves, talking about composition. So as we're doing the planning for this, it's really important that we think about the end user, right? The students and the, the staff in the classroom. And so you'll find on these teams, people that you'd expect to see there. And that would include administrators at the district level here, but also include building principals. But we also have added teachers and support staff to these teams, recognizing that regardless of the plans that we come up with, in the end, they're the ones that have to put them into play in the classroom and in the school. And so it's really important for us to have their input in the planning process. Here's an opportunity for us to, to call out the, the Green Bay Education Association. And, and Dave and Justin have been fantastic. They responded immediately. We had a meeting with them last week on Monday. Told them we were putting these work groups together, told them that we needed their best and brightest. Recognized that we don't have a seat at the table for everybody because of the timeline that we're working under. Targeted a, a number of teachers and asked them to help us fill those, fill those seats. They did a great job stepping up and, and immediately reaching out to their membership and, and getting some folks that were willing to, to come in and help us out with that. One of the things that we're doing moving forward is recognizing, we talked about it at our meeting today with them, that there may be some gaps. There may be some employment areas that we haven't covered. For instance, today, as they were looking back at their list, they said they don't think they've identified any teacher librarians. And so there's an opportunity for us to add a few people to the team as we move forward to make sure that all areas of our operation are represented. So again, a big thanks to them for leveraging their membership and getting participation on these teams. So each of these teams is, is charged with a pretty monumental task because as one of our community commenters noted earlier, we don't have a lot of time to make these decisions. And we want to make sure that we are able to be transparent and, and communicate regularly with our stakeholders about the work that we're doing so that they can see how it's unfolding and, and really for lack of a better way to describe it, you know, to actually watch us think through this. And so it might be a little messy that way, but we think that that's the best way to make sure that we can keep people up to speed. So things that we're looking at, operations, and you think about the complexity of running a district our size. So we've got a, a group working on that infrastructure. I talked about transportation, nutrition. We know that we have to make sure to figure out how to do those things if we've got kids in. The Health and Safety Team is, is looking at the physical health and safety of students and staff. Our academic team obviously is looking at the instructional component and teaching and learning. Social, emotional, behavioral health. And this is not just students, but it's also staff. We recognize that the last few months of school and this period of time over the summer have weighed heavily on students and their families and on our staff. And so we need to make sure that as we're getting ready to, to reconvene in the fall, that we recognize that, you know, if you're looking at Maslow's hierarchy, that we're working on the bottom level there and making sure that our students and our staff receive the support that they need to actually participate in teaching and learning. I referenced equity earlier and, and this is really twofold. It has to do with the instructional component of the work that we do. But I also think that given what's happened in the United States over the past couple of months here, I think that it's important that we acknowledge that there are equity issues beyond the educational equity components of the work that we're doing here. I've been very fortunate. Ms. Ingrid has allowed me to, to join their group and participate on a weekly basis as we go through a community conversation about equity, both in our schools, in our classrooms and our schools and in the community as a whole. And I think that there's an opportunity for us to make sure that we use this opportunity from that standpoint in, in all of our areas of planning. Out-of-school time programs, you know, we always talk about what happens in the classroom, but we provide a holistic education for our kids. They have lots of other opportunities to participate in educational programs that are not during the school day. And so we need to make sure that we are planning for those and recognize that in some cases they'll work lockstep with our instructional program. And other times, because of some of the concerns that we have with health and safety, there might have to be some separate considerations for how they work. And then Lucky Josh, we've got data is something that underpins all of these areas. And so he'll be working cross-functionally with all these groups to make sure that we can leverage technology and leverage our access to data to do all of this work more effectively. Let me take a big breath here and ask if there are questions about our work groups before I move forward.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um. Is there a reason there is no parent voice at the table?
So one of the things, that's a great question, actually, Rhonda. Thanks for asking that. We did survey our parents and so we've got a lot of input. Dr. Stramp has put together some pretty extensive data sets for us to use in consideration. And, and given that, and given what we know right now from the work that we're doing with, with the Brown County Supes and with the other community partners, we think that the next step in the process is to work through some of the information I'm gonna show you as we scroll down through the next sets of slides. We think that the next step in the process is to work through some of the information I'm going to show you as we scroll down through the next sets of slides. But then we also think that there's going to be an opportunity for us to reach back out. Both the staff who are not involved in this process directly and parents to better understand their concerns as we get a little bit further into the summer here. One of the challenges that we have, to be perfectly honest with you, is time. We've got such a short window here that, that we really needed to press people into service and, and. Give them some very narrow windows. We set some two week timetables today. And we just struggle to have more people involved with the tight timeframe that we have.
Can I interrupt you though? You said to interrupt you, right?
Yes, please.
Yes, you did. Okay, just to clarify that. We also surveyed staff, right?
Yes, we did.
Okay, but we have them in these work, work groups. So again, I'm, I'm wondering why there isn't parent voice in these work groups and I'm very disappointed to see that that's not the case. Is, and I, I happen to know a lot of parents who would actually be willing to work with a narrow window timeframe. They'd be willing to come in and be part of the discussion. So I'm asking for that to happen. I think that's a very big misstep. We don't take that opportunity.
And, and we could certainly work on that. I'll tell you one thing that we already are planning on doing is we recognize that. Some of our parent populations have less access to this information than others. And so through the equity component on that district work group, we actually are planning to reach out. And I worked specifically to develop some town hall forums for input. From some of our populations of parents who will have specialized concerns. We're looking at our special education parents, parents of students who are English learners. Some of our at-risk students, but give them the opportunity to participate through that. So there certainly are windows for us to do that. And I know that I had some conversation with the folks on the, the leadership team. I do know that there's a superintendent's advisory council. We've talked about activating them. As another means of, of pulling in parental participation. So I got no problem adding parents to it. Like I said, we, we were just concerned about the timeframe and, and the need to get the process moving as quickly as possible.
And I appreciate that and I hear that. I think it's also important that if, if they are part of the conversation, if they're really part of the conversation. Then they should be noted in the agenda information. Like the packets of information that we have. Because at this point, there's no mention of any of what you just said when you talked about the town hall. You know, some sort of venue for special education parents to have a voice because that's who I continue to hear from the most. Our parents with kids with special needs, physical and emotional, social emotional disabilities, intellectual disabilities. Again, I, I really and truly hope that we're committed to that. I would like to see that noted somewhere because at this point it is not. And so to the average parent looking at this, we are not part, they're not a consideration. It's hard to tell them that they are when they're not noted in the, in this documentation that we have in front of us today.
Understood. We will, we will definitely rectify that. And like I said, another group that we know. That you may not be hearing from, but we also know have individualized concerns. Are the, the parents of our English language, English learner students. Because they've got a whole different set of issues that they faced in the spring. Many of them I have expressed that they don't feel equipped to help their students with online learning. They've got a great deal apprehension about what happens if they go back into an online environment. And so we definitely have that outreach planned and Rhonda, that's a, a great catch for us. We'll make sure that that is in our future report outs to you so that you can see that. And more importantly, we'll make sure that we broadcast that so that the parents know that that ask is coming for them.
Thank you.
Other questions on the leadership groups or the, the work teams?
I actually have more questions on that if you don't mind.
Please do.
And these are all questions that have come to me in the last week. So I'm just basically the voice, which is technically my job, right?
It is.
So I have some questions about how the teams were chosen, how the actual, like what was. You said they're, they're best and brightest, but what was the criteria? Do you happen to know what they were looking for as far as who's participating? Because I happen to know people that volunteered that were not chosen. So what, what were they looking for specifically? When they decided who would be on the teams?
Sure. So what we did was we sat down and individually, obviously we've got a little bit more control over. The folks on the admin team and the support staff team. So we looked at functional roles of people on our leadership team. And, and we had made some assignments among the administrative staff. We then looked at folks at the building level. We asked for volunteers from our building level leadership. After they volunteered, they, we then made some assignments to teams based on perception of strength of our building level administrators. While we were doing that, we met with the Education Association. We explained this process to them. We told them what we were looking for in terms of some level of expertise. In these areas. We know that they reached out to their membership. And I, we understand from the conversation that we had with Justin and David today that they had far, far higher response than there were. Slots available. And so they went through a selection process. I can't speak to that specifically. Other than knowing that, like I said, we told them the areas that we were working on, the kinds of things that we wanted those teams to do. And then they, like I said, they told us that they had a, a pretty overwhelming level of response from the staff who were willing to come in and do that work. So I'm not surprised that you heard from folks that, that weren't chosen. And I know from the conversation that we had today that they, they had to be fairly selective. Maybe one other thing that's an important point to note is that we recognize that this is an ask for our staff. And for many of our staff, we're expected to be here. We're working during the summer. So this is part of our regular work year. But for other staff, it's not. And so we are compensating those folks that are willing to stand up and do this work. And you know, we do have a finite pool of money that we're using for that. And that was also one of the delimiting factors for how many seats we had at the table.
And to that point, can, and this was also a question that was sent to me. Can you touch on what budget is paying for this? For the, for the, the teachers to come in? That was a question that was posed to me as well.
Sure. I'll let Pete jump in because actually this is a, a good opportunity for us to, to share with you that we are coding. Costs that are associated with this. Such that whether we can access CARES, CARES dollars for some of these expenses. So these are dollars that came in above and beyond our budget. And whether or not there may be future sources of money that may be applicable to these expenses. And so we want to make sure that we have these all coded so that we can either use current dollars that came in. For pandemic relief or future dollars that come in. Pete, do you have anything else you want to add to that?
Sure, that's exactly what has happened. And in fact, today, the chart of accounts was established for. Expenditures that may be COVID related that will be able to be reimbursed or offset from the federal government. We have the potential of getting some funds for personal protective equipment and hand sanitizer from FEMA. We also have a large amount of money that will be coming to the district through the Title I CARES allocation. Some of that money has to be distributed to private schools through a process where they actually will order and. Will do the ordering and purchasing for them and reimburse them. But the lion's share of the money will be for the 21,000 students served by Green Bay Public Schools. So a COVID planning team. Team that would be putting together plans for what school would look like in the fall would certainly be an expenditure that would be allowed. Under the CARES Act. And so we'll be establishing a budget for that process. That could also be adding positions throughout the course of the year. Or other services that our students would need with respect to care, COVID related issues.
So I cheer Rhonda that that goes right back to the issues that you raised earlier tonight, which are the, the. Cost questions, right? The at what cost? So how much is this going to cost us? And then the opportunity cost. On what other things could those dollars be spent? And so we knew that we needed some assistance from our end users, our, our teachers and our support staff. But we also recognize that we needed to be somewhat cautious with how much money we spent on the planning process. Because we want to preserve as many dollars as we can for implementation.
And can I just add to that? I appreciate that, but I can just add to that, that I'm sure parents would be doing this for free.
Thank you. That is a very good point. So I, a couple of things in the what we know category. Because I think one of the challenges that we have out there while we're working with our, our parents and our community is that many of the things we don't know yet. And so what do we know right now? We do know based on our, our weekly meetings that we're seeing increases in both infection and fatality rates across the country, across the state as a whole. We've seen an increase in infection rates in Brown County. I, I think you've seen that in some of the emails that have come to you from community members. We've had several parents that have told us that if I knew now what I knew then, when I filled out the survey, I would have filled it out differently. So I think it's important for us to continue to monitor that. So we understand the impact that that has both on, on parental and staff decisions about the fall. We do know that our healthcare professionals in the community have reiterated at every single meeting that we've had. How important it does, is for us to emphasize frequent hand washing, physical distancing and mask wearing. We are implementing those in the district right now. And, and we know that those best practices are something that'll continue as we move into the fall. I, I think this next bullet point is, is really crucial for us. We have some students and some staff who are unable at this point in time to return to our classrooms. And will still be unable to do so in the fall. And the reason that they will be unable to do so is either they are immunocompromised. Or someone in the household that they reside in is immunocompromised. And their healthcare professional is going to advise them that they should not return to school. So those, those students and those staff are in the unable category. We also have some unwilling and that again applies to students and staff. Their fear, their concerns about some of the implications of the virus and, and interacting with others in large crowds. Is putting them in a position where they will choose not to come to school in the fall as either students or staff. And I think it's really important for us to think about both of these populations as we move forward in our planning. We do know, and this was reiterated in community comment today, you know, in-person school is most effective. That opportunity to engage with the students in the classroom, to work with them academically, to work with them socially and emotionally. We know that that has the greatest return on investment for us. And in an ideal world, we have all kids and all staff back in the facilities and learning looks like it does in February. That would be wonderful. But we're also concerned that that's not reality. And so we need to make sure that, that we are planning accordingly. So as I get to the last two slides, I'm going to talk to you and you'll hear it from me more than once about hoping for the best, which is all those kids back in class. But also planning for the worst. So I mentioned before, from an equity standpoint, we know that there are gaps that we need to focus on with our students. We need to identify and close those. In an ideal world, all kids are going to finish this next year on grade level. And so we need to continue to work to close those gaps. We talked about mental health and social and emotional wellbeing. And if we don't focus on that in our planning process, we're going to struggle to get kids to teach and learn. I, I know you have heard from staff. I have heard from many staff after the, the, we had a staff meeting last week. Via Zoom, had about 600 people on there. And many of the, the follow-up comments that I got from staff were about their own personal safety. And the fears that they had with it. And we're continuing to communicate with them that that is a, a key component of our planning process. And then I talked to you a little bit about the out of school opportunities that kids have. And that's the role of co-curriculars. So those are some of the things that we know right now. And I think what many parents in the community, maybe folks who are tuned in tonight are really looking for the what we don't know piece. And, and what kind of planning are we doing? And so I'm going to tell you just on a very broad level right now, because those work groups are still in progress on this. We're really looking at these three modalities when we talk about instructional models. The first thing that we're doing in that plan for the worst process is we're looking at offsite learning. And we want to make sure that we have a dialed in, ready to go offsite learning program. If we find ourselves in March 13th again, and all children wind up having to be offsite at home. And, and learning absent the, the physical connection with their classroom and their teachers. So our groups right now, all of our working groups are tasked with this as their first, most important responsibility. And as they conclude this work, they are then shifting to the left on your screen here. What does it look like for onsite for all kids? So if we're able to bring students back in the fall, what is that going to look like? It's not going to look like February. So we know that already. So what types of changes do we need to make in our instructional delivery model in the operation and infrastructure of the district? In order to make sure that we can educate kids safely. I think it's important to kind of put an asterisk at the end of that. Remember that we have the unable and the unwilling. So now if you go over to the fall, far right-hand side of the screen, we talk about blended learning and that's a combination of offsite and onsite. And so once we've done a, a job on offsite and onsite pieces. And, and we feel that with some level of confidence that we have, plans that are very, fairly solidified. Then we look at it and say on a continuum, that blended learning piece could be closer to onsite or it could be closer to offsite. And it could be somewhere in between. And to be perfectly honest with you, it could change over the course of the year. Depending on what happens with the virus, depends on what happens with community spread. Depends on what happens with outbreaks in individual classrooms or schools. And so the tough part of the process really is, is trying to figure out what blended learning looks like. So I'll leave you with this and then I'll open it up for questions. I have been incredibly impressed with the, the folks that are on these teams. With their willingness to step up with the work that they've already done. And the expectations that they've set for themselves to get this work up and ramped up and ready to go. And like I said, every single person that I've talked to, whether they're administrative staff, teachers or support staff, has been willing to, to stand up. And be counted and be a part of this process. And I think we should count ourselves blessed that we have that level of commitment to this work. So that for me gives me a high level of confidence that I'll be able to tell you that as we come back. In subsequent board meetings and work sessions, that we'll be able to give you individual updates on the work of these plans. To Rhonda's earlier point, we're going to provide more detail on the individual work team so that you can see that work taking place. I think she raises a really good point that we need to make sure not only that we know what's happening on the inside, that our staff know what's happening. But people from the outside looking in, whether they're students, we've got a couple of high school kids on the, on the call right now. Whether they're our students, whether they're our parents, whether the community, that folks on the outside looking in, understand the work that we're doing. And hopefully as that unfolds, we'll get input from them that helps us build a better system. So that's more talking than I normally like to do, but I want to make sure you knew where we were at today and where we're going with it. Let me see what kinds of questions you have. It's all right with you. I'm going to stop the screen share so that we can see each other again here. There we go.
Sure, thank you. So Steve, I have just have a few questions. I'm going back to the working groups. I didn't see food service or that department represented in any of those. So can you tell me where they fall and how that work is moving forward? Because that is a massive job.
Absolutely. Food service and transportation are in infrastructure. And so they're looking at that. And it's also falls into operations to some degree too. So I, I think one of the things that you see groups on here, so you bring up a great point, Christina. You see groups on here, but it's important to recognize that in some senses, it's a little bit like a Venn diagram. So you've got some overlap. So while food service may work in infrastructure, they're going to also have to work in academics. Because if we decide we're going to feed kids in classes, there's going to be an impact on, on teachers and the learning environment in there. And so they're going to have to work cross-functionally. So while we've got these silos of the teams there, you also need to think about it almost like a rug with a, a warp and a weft in there, right? So we've got, we've got cross-functional work going on. Josh made a great point earlier today. He talked about making sure that teams had someone who was a liaison and a contact point for the data team. Because every single one of these teams is going to have a data impact. So you're going to see some other areas of very high importance like that, Christina, that are inside some of these other groups. So to Rhonda's point, as we build this out and we can share more detail with you. We will show you where those pieces fit in there. And where necessary, we'll also give you the opportunity to talk to some of those folks who are doing that work.
Great. I have a, just a comment and one other question. One of the things that I am interested in learning more about is how we will be serving breakfast and lunch in the classroom. Because we know that, that traditional, that model actually can increase participation rates, which is really important, especially for the students that are in person. So I'm curious to learn more about that at another time. But the other question is, and I may have seen something or maybe I've missed it and I apologize. But what is the DPI currently saying about testing and waivers for, for districts moving forward for this year? Do we have any information? What are your thoughts on that?
That's a really good topic of discussion. So I've had a couple of people that have written in and, and wonder where we're at on that. That's a really good topic of discussion. So I've had a couple of people that have written in and wonder where we're at on that. DPI isn't taking a stance on that right now. I do know from some of the dialogue that I've had through WASD with superintendents around the state. There's some dialogue about putting some pressure on them to give us some relief for that. Recognizing some assessments are required from the federal level, but some are required from the state level. So there's some discretion in Madison about some of those assessments. And where possible, we need to be really judicious about how we're using our instructional time.
Thank you.
Steve, I know we've heard from parents, I mean, we've heard from two tonight that, that want us to open schools. I have, we have two emails in our box, people saying you can't possibly open school. And I'm wondering what kind of thought, I know you don't have the details to this, but what kind of thought you've given to offering, you know, in the, in those, those three models, are you fitting in the families that don't want, they don't feel comfortable sending their kids to school, they'll be in that online group? And so that online option will be there always for those kids. And then I'm assuming that as the year goes on, of course, depending on the virus incidents and break, you know, all, all of the factors with COVID, that there might be families who become less comfortable with their kids in school and want to opt out and go into online or blended or something different than what they signed up in the beginning. And then there might be parents who become comfortable and want to, you know, have their kids in classrooms. So what's the, the thinking around? I mean, the Herculean task to try to manage that, but kind of what's your big picture thinking about that right now?
Yeah, that's a great synthesis of the challenge that we have in front of us. So I'll offer a couple of thoughts on that. First of all, we know that the unable will need to have an off-site learning option. They're going to need something because they're physically not going to be able to come to campus. And so we know we have to build that out. So if we're going to build that out, then it gives us the opportunity to offer that to those who are unwilling and, and just the, the fear factor is such that they're not comfortable having their kids come to school. So we know that that's an opportunity that we can provide for them. And that to be honest with you, that's one of the reasons that we're starting, are planning on that, because we know we have a contingent of our population that will have to have that and a continued of our population that want to have that. And so we'll build that out so that we know that that's robust and it's ready to go. We can learn from the lessons that, that occurred during March, April, May and June and, and build a better process for students for this fall. We also know, as you said, that there are people that are going to choose to send their kids to school. They want to. And, and that's for a variety of reasons. And, and so we need to make sure that we have that onsite preparation for those students and for those whose parents plan to send them to school. But then to your point, we may have students that for a variety of needs need to move in or out. If they're in the unable category, we may have students that somebody at home gets sick. And so now they have to quarantine. So we're going to have to build a mechanism to provide a free and appropriate public education to students who become unable to attend school. You mentioned that we may have some folks who, who get to that point where they're unwilling. They may start in school and they want to move out. For them, we'll probably look at some benchmarks. Whether those are quarters or semesters or, or something like that, so that there's a, a smoother transition for those students. You mentioned you may have some parents that, that start outside and want to come back in. And again, we'll look for some smooth transition points for that. It is a Herculean task because you have to balance course loads for teachers. You know, at the secondary level, we're going to struggle. We know it already. How do you socially distance with 2,000 students at Preble High School? What in the world does that look like? And so we're already talking about how we go about reducing student population there in such a manner that we can accommodate students and, and be safe about it. That might look very different at the elementary level. We may be able to sequester students in their classroom and, and create, they talk about it as an extended family unit. If you look at, listen to the CDC or some of the folks. And they talk about socialization and we may be able to create some smaller family units there that meet the, the health and safety requirements for us. But we really have to live with a foot in two worlds. And that is, we have to be prepared for everybody at home. And then we have to recognize that just like the American Academy of Pediatrics says, kids do best when they're in school, when it is safe for them to be there. And so those are the, the two worlds. We have to have a foot in both worlds and recognize that there's going to be a lot of gray area in between. So you are exactly right to describe it as a Herculean task. And, and that's really what these teams, these district work groups are tasked with doing over the course of a four-week period of time.
And then just one follow-up question. The, the flip side of that is that we'll also have that same kind of need for flexibility with teachers. Cause we're going to have potentially teachers that again, for all the same reasons as the students, either are in or out or, or you know, can't or won't or all those kinds of things. Are you, are you trying to keep all of the kids that are in a school, in a virtual program with, with teachers from that school? Or have you looked at alternatives of just saying, you know, at, at some point that that may not be possible based on who's there and who's not there and based on numbers. At some point, do you create a classroom that's maybe made up of kids from, you know, two neighboring schools? Or, or something like that, just to make a numbers work? Is that something that you've talked about?
It is. That is exactly something we've talked about. One way to think about it is we're going to have a population of students unable to come to school and we're going to have a population of staff that are unable to come to school. And, and can we figure out how to line those up? Recognizing that you may have a second grade teacher from Fort Howard who, who can't come to school. That teacher, he or she may wind up having a collection of second graders from around the district that form their own virtual community, because those students are unable to come to school. So we had that conversation again with the EA when we talked about the Education Association, we talked about what that might look like. We may have to look at those teachers that are, are unable to come to work and we may have a, a second grade teacher, like I described, who can't come to work. And we may have a classroom with third grade students that need that online environment because they're unable to come to school. And so we may have to look at certifications and, and try to do an alignment there. So again, we're going to have to be super flexible with that process. But those are the exact kinds of questions that our work groups are wrestling with.
Okay. Thanks. Eric?
Excuse me. Could I ask a little question?
Oh, Ian.
Yes. Sorry?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ian.
All right. So, um, well, obviously in-person learning is a lot more effective than online learning. Do you think there are any ways that we're probably going to have online learning? Any ways that online learning could be made more effective? Cause it's obviously a lot less effective than in person, but any little things teachers can do? Cause it's lacking.
Yes, absolutely. So I, I talked about the lessons learned from the spring. And one of the things that our leadership team has already done is transition to all of our professional development time to focus on online instruction. So that way this gives the teachers permission to put on hold some of the other professional development that they would otherwise be engaged in. And we can do some of that professional development between now and the start of the school year, but that's not enough. So we have actually looked at what we're going to do over the course of the school year. Because you know, you're exactly right. At the high school level, we can almost guarantee you that you're not going to be in person like you were in February. It's just not going to look like that. There's too many kids in a building for that to work effectively. So there's going to have to be some in-between place, right? So if we know that you're going to spend some of your time in person with your teacher and we know where the effectiveness lies there. We know you're going to spend some time online with your teacher. What can we do not only between now and the start of the school year, but over the course of the school year to continue to elevate their skillset so that they're more effective for you?
Yes. And you were saying they were taking, what was it called again? Teacher classes. I'm sorry.
Professional development. You're all right. That's good.
Professional development. Yes. So that they can be more effective.
Yes.
Teaching online. And that's pretty good. What would those? What would that development include? Like specific things?
Yep. It's, it's a couple of different things. One of them is to make sure that they know how to use the technology tools that are available to them because you know, whether it's this web platform we're on right now for Zoom or, or an instructional platform. We want to make sure that they are masters of that tool. And then we also want to look at it from a, a content and what we call a pedagogy standpoint, which is how you teach that. So we want to make sure that the content and the way that they teach it is optimized for online learning, because that's different than in an in-person setting. So that's our opportunity to help them get up to speed as they get into the start of the school year, which will probably be focused pretty heavily on that platform piece. To make sure that they're ready to go with that. And then we'll transition into that pedagogy piece or that content and how you teach it, both as we move into the start of the school year and then over the course of the school year.
Yes. Just to clarify, Zoom currently isn't blocked by Gbest. Is it? Like the website may be blocked. It's not blocked?
That's a good question.
It is, it is not currently blocked.
There we go. Thank you, Josh. I think there was another question out there.
Yeah, Eric has a question.
If you want to go to Luke first, it sounds like he has a follow-up to Ian and then I'll go after. Luke, you're on mute.
Oh, there he is.
Oh, you mentioned that it's going to be kind of like a hybrid between online and in-person classes. And I noticed like last semester, sorry, some classes were way easier to learn online than others, for example, band. You know what I mean? Obviously band can't be done really online. For a class like band, will there be more in-person time than a class, for example, like language arts?
That's a, a really important point to note there because we have many career trade and tech ed classes that are almost impossible to teach online. I don't know how you deal with the aquaculture program over at Southwest, if you're not onsite to work with the fish. And so I think that when that teaching and learning team does their work, one of the things that they're going to have to look at is exactly that question, Luke. Which courses may be more suited to online instruction and which courses may be virtually impossible to deliver online? And for those courses, then how do we take account for the student interest in that area and, and try to meet their needs more effectively?
And on top of that, even like between math and social studies, I noticed math was way harder to learn online than sort of like, and I even think that even teachers, certain teachers do a lot better teaching online. And I, I just think there's so many different points to take into account, other than like even, oh, they need to be in person to take this because it's banned, but also is that, if that band teacher is super effective in a, in the home situation, then it might be a difference.
Well, and one of the things that we really want to do is we want to figure out who those all-stars are and take advantage of those. So from a pure lead professional development standpoint, if somebody's knocking it out of the park, we want to make sure that we take advantage of their expertise and make sure that we can use that to cross-pollinate the skillsets of the rest of our, our staff.
Hi.
Thanks. So Steve, obviously, you know, it's come across with all the questions on the monumental task that we have at hand. And certainly, you know, Green Bay is the largest district in our area. So we have more to consider. I think we also recognize that whatever plan we come up with, it's going to impact every single one of our students differently. You know, the age, the academic ability, so many different factors. So I, I definitely appreciate that. But I think there's a lot of anxiety that's building in our community just from the unknown. And I know you don't have all the answers and the team is doing all of this work, but as, as people are watching this tonight, they were probably tuning in, hoping that we were going to announce some grand plan and that, that's clearly not going to happen. So looking into your crystal ball as best you can. Wondering if you can, can give us your best prediction on when we can expect something to come out? Especially because I know, you know, Howard Swamaco came out with something last week and I know some other districts are planning. And as that starts to come out, if we're the last one, it's going to create a lot of even more anxiety that is already there. So can you just speak to sort of when we can hope to communicate something?
Yeah, I certainly can. So at our Brown County Superintendent's meeting, several of the area districts and Howard Swamaco was one of them, said that they kind of sent up test balloons and, and sent these out so that they could then gauge parental feedback on that. Recognizing that then they would use that to monitor and adjust their plan accordingly. So after we had that conversation, one of the, the concerns that came out amongst all the superintendents was if everybody starts sending these test balloons up all over Brown County, it could cause a lot of confusion from parents and from students who may think that that is the way that they are going to do it, when really they're just trying to, to test the waters and, and see what people's thoughts are about that particular part of the planning process. And so as a collective, as a whole, we committed to having more finality to the planning process by the end of July. So that we could both report out to our boards and our communities, what we saw, a better picture of what those options look like at the end of July. And, and as, as was noted in community comment, you know, we understand what the open enrollment deadlines are. And so we want to make sure that parents have as much information as possible, so that they make good choices for their children and good choices for them as families. And certainly one of the things that we want to do is we want to be able to share with them the breadth of the opportunities that we think that we will have in place to meet their needs, whether those are onsite or offsite.
Quick question. Do districts in the area, well, all have a joint start time? Are they planning on a similar time to start? School?
Yes, at this point.
Or are they all planning to do hybrid? Okay.
Yeah. Well, we're all talking about, I'll be make sure I get the question right.
Another district, yeah.
So there, we're all talking about same, same start time. So when you think about, you know, when does the school year start? So we're all talking about that. And then in terms of the options that are available, I'd tell you, oh, you can't see the screen right now. You know, I'd tell you that based on the conversations that we're having with those groups, they're all having similar dialogue inside their district. What does it look like online? What does it look like offsite? What does it look like somewhere in between? So I'd say that the conversations taking place across the county look very similar district to district.
And if they tried tomorrow in a different district, well, probably wouldn't be the, well, sorry, they probably wouldn't start for the same time as Green Bay, wouldn't they?
They, from a start date standpoint, they would be starting at the same time that we are. Their choice of, of modality, whether they're online or offline, might look a little different from district to district. Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Christina?
So I'm sure the district is paying attention and following the, the proposed city ordinance by the city for masking.
Yes.
So Steve, what, have you all been in communications with the city about that? And how could that affect or impact the decisions that the district makes?
That's a, a great point in terms of not only what we're doing, but the rest of our, our county folks are doing, because it may only be a municipal ordinance. It may not be a county-wide ordinance. There've been a lot of conversations and Melissa's been really helpful with this one in terms of what you can and can't do. So what is legally permissible? And certainly, you know, I'll be perfectly upfront with you. We've been asking pretty directly from a municipal standpoint and a public health standpoint for guidance in those areas. We are not a public health entity. We are a public education entity. And so we're looking for direction from those agencies that do provide public health guidance. So it would be ideal for us if we would have the County Department of Public Health make a determination about who wears masks and when they wear masks. And, and that would be helpful from the standpoint of our individual classrooms and schools. But depending on what transpires over the course of this, this school year, if we have students and staff that are traveling back and forth between districts and the county, having a uniform set of guidelines makes it far easier from a enforcement standpoint, but also from a collective efficacy standpoint. If people know what the expectation is and it's not different here than it is there, that's a fundamental underpinning of PBIS and, and any other system like that is a uniform set of expectations. So that you're not changing your expectations as you cross the street or, or move down the road. So we're pushing pretty hard and they've been pretty responsive on that. And we're hoping to get some, some guidelines. It goes right back to the question about what's an outbreak and how do you respond to it? You know, we don't want Green Bay deciding that if there's an outbreak, kids are out for X number of days. And then we find out the district next door, if they have an outbreak, kids are out for X plus 10 days and that there's this huge disparity. So we're looking for some uniformity there and, and public health plays a big role in that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, I guess I would just say that I would also prefer that there not be a great disparity between districts. What's far more important to me is us doing, you know, what, what is scientifically correct? Even if others are, you know, you could say, I don't, I don't think this is a serious suggestion anywhere if, but if a neighboring district or even many neighboring districts said, if we. Get a single case, we are going to close the building for two weeks completely. Well, I don't care how many places are doing it. That's outside of the guidance and we, we shouldn't do it. On the other extreme, if, I don't know if, I'm sure this won't happen, but if someplace was a well is, you know, as long as it was less than three percent of students had Corona. We're just gonna watch and wait. That's, you know, so I, I want us to be doing the right thing by. You know, the right thing scientifically and, and looking to, you know, looking to our, our experts. And if, if we can get, you know, if we can get other districts on the same page, that's good. But more importantly, I think is that we get it right. And getting it right means with the best information that we have and with information that may change. And I would hope thinking of one of our speakers earlier, you know, if someone is, if someone is deciding to where they're going to. What district they're going to go to next year, based on what that district is going to be doing on September 1st, given Corona. I, I, I hope in fairness that the same. The same answer of we don't know for sure that we must give to be truthful, I hope others are giving that same answer to be truthful. You know, I've read, I've read the Howard Swamaco plan and it, it does a good job of laying out options. But that is also a we don't know yet document. It's a we don't know document with, with tracks. So. Yeah, I'm, first and foremost, I want to, you know, do things, you know, do things right and do things safe. I guess the one, the one absolute is that for those who. Must choose an online track or for those who prefer to choose an online track, having, you know, having that available. For everyone who wants it for sure, with the ability to ramp it be to people who would prefer in-person. If we have to.
Yeah, great points. And, and I think that one of the things that we've really been striving for, and, and we may not be able to get there. And, and you're exactly right. We may not be able to get there, but to the extent that we can, we're trying to hold area districts together. You know, this is, this is a time for collective effort. It's not a time for me to try to set up some advantageous program to lure a bunch of kids from a neighboring district here through open enrollment. It, it is a really an opportunity for us to make sure that we are putting health and safety for students and staff at the fore. That given the parameters that we have with that, that we're building the best education program we can for them, regardless of the platform that we're on. And that where possible, we're doing this in conjunction with our education partners in our neighboring districts.
Good question. Our private schools in the area working with you guys to have a similar start time schedule.
They are not at this point in time. We, it's my understanding that that group was in place when I got here. I know that they've reached out to them. But I'm not exactly sure where they're at in that decision-making process.
Ryan, do you have a question?
Actually, I have three questions and a comment. I'm going to go back to, I guess, touch on what Andrew is talking about. And is it possible to pull up the attachment? This is planning guide for 2021 school year, just for reference.
See if I've got it up on the screen here.
So I guess the first attachment.
Yep. Hold on a second here. I can open it up. Give me just a second. There we go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Let me blow it up a little bit for you.
That's great. Thank you. So I'm looking at the three categories. The first one is high community transmission and second is medium to low transmission. Third is no community transmission. I think we can all agree that the third category is probably not a relevant point of discussion at this time. So when I'm looking at the two, the first two, I'm interested to know what the data points are when you talk about high community transmission. Because that would be completely offsite. And then you go to medium to low transmission and that has considerations as well. What are the data points to determine and who's determining those data points and how they're used to decide which? Which category we adhere to?
And that, that is the, the crux of the issue right there. And that's where we're turning to our healthcare partners and to the Department of Public Health for guidance on that. And they have not given us firm commitments on any of that. If I pull my planning doc up here, which I've got up on the other screen, they're hoping to give us more definitive answers that can be released. From a community-wide standpoint, by the end of the month or early into the first week of August. So we're hoping that we have a quantifiable definition of what that means from public health, from Bellon, from Pervaya, from BayCare. As we move into the end of the month, because that'll be incredibly important for us as we look at what. You know, if you think again about this as a continuum and if we're between offsite and onsite. And we're really living in some kind of hybrid area in between, which way are we tilting and how do we know when we're tilting that way? And so we're really looking to the public health experts for some operational definitions of this.
Okay, um, so, but I just, I have a follow-up question to, to your comment or your, to your answer. Does Howard Swamaco have those numbers? Because they seem to have a little more of a plan. So I'm wondering, what are they using to determine that? And is there anything available? Does the county health department have anything available at all at this time to, to allow districts to actually look into making a plan? Because I mean, how long do we allow them to wait before we actually determine what we're going to do? And what if, I mean, if they don't know at this point what a medium to low transmission is when it comes to opening a school district? I'm not sure when, what would it take to make them know that?
Well, that's a good question. So the first thing I'll tell you is that as far as I understand, they know what I know because they're in the same meetings that I am. And I think they're probably doing exactly what we're doing, which is we're recognizing that absent a. Definition from them, absent some of the, those hard numbers that you're talking about, they're planning for what if? And, and they're planning for offsite instruction. They're planning for some kind of blended hybrid instruction. And once the model is in place, if, if the healthcare experts come in and say, here's the, the breakpoint between those two. I, that's, that's all well and good, but if we don't have both of the plans in place, we can't implement either one of them. So we're going to build the models and, and we're going to seek feedback from them as we close in on the end of the month here about where those breakpoints are. But to my understanding, they've got the same information that we do and they're sitting in the same meetings that I am.
Okay. And so I guess that, I guess that kind of answers my question, but I'd actually like to hear this on record if at all possible. The board is hearing a lot of, we're receiving a lot of communications that ask us basically, they mention that we have a hard decision. They want us to decide to do this, that, what is ultimately the board's role when it comes to what next September looks like? Or frankly, any time of the year. So it sounds to me like you're saying that there's going to be. It's the county health department who really determines what this looks like. What role does the board have? And will we ever actually take a vote on anything? Do we have to accept the county health department's recommendations officially? Um, what will the board be doing between now and September when it comes to any decision-making at all, if at all?
So I can, I can tell you that based on my experience so far, dealing with folks at the state level and folks at the local level. There's very little willingness to give us concrete answers. Most of what we get are guidance and recommendations and I'm, I'm sure that there's a sound reason for that. I, and, and. You may not want to be that person in that organization at that state or local level that's making a decision about what the breakpoint is here. So just like the CDC told us that you should only put 12 kids on a bus, but you guys figured that out on your own. I, or the DPI put out the education forward plan and said, hey, here's some ideas, but you guys figure it out on your own. I, my assumption is we're going to get the same thing from, from our healthcare providers. They're going to tell us this is what best practice says and that's our advice. And there isn't going to be a definitive pronouncement about this is what you have to do. So that gives us some latitude. So our intention is to, to develop these plans and to bring them forward to you. We're going to seek input and feedback from you as we develop the plans, as we move through the process. You know, from a course correction standpoint, the more often that we have dialogue with you, the easier it is for us to stay on track. And, and that by the time we're done, we've got three modalities of education that, that you as a board feel comfortable up with us offering. To the students and parents in the district. Does it require board action? It doesn't. Should it require board affirmation and participation? Absolutely. And so that's the, the process that we're looking at moving forward. I'm certainly open to, to feedback or input from the board about how we go about doing that. My intention is to have this on all future board work sessions and board meetings so that we can keep you. I updated on the work that we're doing. And again, the idea is to make sure that from a course correction standpoint, we're meeting your expectations as we build out these three models.
So can I ask you, according to that answer, what is the best way for board members to elevate voices of the community? I mean, we, we need to know where we're supposed to take this rather than, because I, I frankly don't believe we can wait two weeks between doing that. Not with the urgency of the time, the timeline. So what would be the best way for board members to do that?
Oh, that's a key component there. So if you're getting feedback from the community, I absolutely do not want you to wait two weeks to, to share that with us. You are welcome to push that straight to me and then I can get those people and their interests connected to the right work teams so that they can provide input to them. I, because if we wait two weeks to get that information, we may have already moved down a path that, that. Leaves us with that as a blind spot. So please don't, don't wait two weeks if you have input. Please connect with me and then maybe we can triangulate and I can connect with the constituents that, that, that are contacting you. And we can get them in touch with the right people on those leadership teams, whether they're support staff, teachers or administrators. We can make sure that their voice is heard and it's part of that process.
And I have one more question and one more comment. So I was told there is, there was a possibility of, because I had asked at the last board meeting about. A potential secondary student survey, survey to second, to for secondary students. And then there was a discussion of possible focus groups on that. Are we interested in getting secondary students' voice in this discussion? And if we are, how is that going to happen?
I would say yes to that. How it's going to happen? That's a good question, but that's definitely something that our academics group should be able to, to do within this timeframe that we have.
Mr. Merly, I could respond to that.
All right. Thank you. Sorry, I can't see on the screen.
Yeah, um, Rhonda had brought this up a couple of weeks ago and I had reached out to her, maybe even a month ago. To learn more. And since that time, we have been convening a group along with Dr. Stramp, who's taken the lead on this. We're right now vetting through some questions and we wanted to give work groups opportunity to add questions to the survey as well. Our goal, Miss Sittinacow, is to have it by hopefully well before the end of the month, before the end of the month of July. We also, to your point earlier, your concern about making sure that we capture the voice of those that tend not to answer the survey. We're exploring options there as well to make sure everybody has an opportunity. Thank you. Um, and I had just have one more thing. I just, I just want to say this. I heard it and it. It was mentioned that. People from the outside. And I assume that you're referring to our community and I absolutely do not think of our community as the outside. I believe they are the nucleus. They are literally, figuratively, they are, without them, we cannot function. I want us to, to talk and speak to them as. In more of an inclusive fashion. So I, I personally do not feel that that's how that is and I hope we don't refer to them.
I apologize. I certainly didn't mean to be exclusionary on that. I think about who's inside the buildings and who's outside the buildings is the way that I, I was framing that. So we clearly have students and teachers that, that live in the building, if you will. And then we've got folks who maybe be like me and they're empty nesters and they don't have kids in the district anymore, but they're still very invested in the work that we do. But they may not be participating in education on a day-to-day basis. But I, that is duly noted and I will use more inclusionary terms moving forward.
Thank you. Andrew?
So I, I got, I think what the, the closest we're probably going to get to definitions, if we're using the high, the medium to low and the null. There's, there's verbal definitions from the CDC, which I think is what's being adapted here. So it looks like category, category one, the null community spread. You could probably even have a couple of cases if you can trace all the, if you can trace all the contacts, you could still probably be in there. And there probably were some, some periods where, where Brown County was getting quite close to that. After our spike settled down, but there's other parts of the state that have probably not been close to that since we started. If I jump for a minute to the definition of category three, large-scale community transmission, healthcare staffing significantly impacted. Multiple cases within communal settings like healthcare facilities, schools and mass gatherings. That's pretty strongly worded. Hopefully we don't get back there again at all. It seems like. The wording of the middle category, widespread and/or sustained transmission with high likelihood or confirmed exposure. Within communal settings with potential for rapid increase in suspected cases that. That seems like the catch-all to me, kind of. I mean, you'd probably have your, your percentage of new cases week over week would probably have to be. Tiny to get you into the, into the null category and you'd have to have something so bad in. To be in the third category, now we're talking exceeding hospital capacity, which fortunately we haven't hit. So if, if that. If you read the, if you read these things and we're just, we're just going off these verbal definitions, which I, I, you know, I, I guess my point is. If we just look at the one-sentence definition the CDC gave for each of these categories, the high, the, they call it minimal moderate and the null or. Minimal. I, it seems like it just guides you to that middle answer all the time. And, you know, Howard Swamaco appears to be coming out and saying we're in the, as far as high school goes, we're taking the, we're expecting to, to take the middle road. And, and be blended and here's how, here's how we're going to blend it. I think. To me, I think it's too early to know that, but I think the right thing to do is if the decision is that we do know that to. Get out there with it, tell the truth, whether people like it or not, whether we're going to take criticism for it being too risky. Or take criticism for playing it too safe and limiting options, because no matter what we pick, we're going to hear both of those. And plenty of, plenty. And plenty of, plenty of both of those. So, you know, we, we've actually been, knock on wood, doing, you know, if you look at Brown, Brown County's had a 5% increase over the last week. I'd, I'd rather be zero, but I, you know, my coworkers in Madison are living a different, a different experience when they're up 21% in the last week. We're up, you know, we're up five. If we can never break that five, we probably won't overload hospitals, but I'm nervous for other, other cities. So.
I'd say you're right on target, Andrew, because I think that in the end, if you think about the high community transmission alternative for us, right, that's everybody online. And, and we know that we're going to need to have that option for a percentage of our students who are unable or willing, unwilling to come to school. But then to your point, the likelihood that we get to the no to community transmission at any point in the near future is probably pretty limited. And so knowing that, we're probably going to have a larger percentage of our students living somewhere in the middle. And then the question that we really wind up having to decide is, is which way are we tilting? Do we, are we tilting more towards the no community transmission, tilting more towards the high community transmission? And then within that tilt, we need enough flexibility in our system that we can meet kids' needs if they wind up tilting far enough that they move into most likely that, that all online world. And so that's what we're trying to build as we go through that. But yeah, you're right on target with that. And, and to your point, our intentionality is to make sure and spell this out as clearly as possible to all community stakeholders so that they can all make well-informed decisions that best meet their family's needs.
Are there any other questions? Trying to see if we have all, we have all the same screen.
I just had a quick question.
Sorry, you're on my second screen.
Question, because I, Steve, you had mentioned that parents who had taken the survey before are now saying if they would have, you know, there's updated information. So if parents do want to provide rapid feedback, is there a platform currently? How would you suggest that they do that, even to go back to Rhonda's question about the board? How can we facilitate that and get that directly to you so that it don't even have to go through us?
Right now they're emailing me directly and I would encourage them to keep doing that because that allows me to pass it on to the team leaders for immediate response. You know, in some cases, they may have questions in more than one leadership group area. And I might have to forward that to a couple of leadership teams to provide responses to them, but that allows the groups to see those comments. So we may develop, depending on the volume of it, we may have to look at it, an alternative to collection if I can't keep up with that. But at least at this point in time, it really allows me to kind of keep my, my thumb on the pulse.
Okay. So if they get, if you get a bunch of emails and it's from me, don't be angry.
I'm good with that. Forward away, forward away. And if you, if you want to, if you want to hit reply to them and copy me, so they've got that direct avenue of transmission, that works just fine.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And let me, let me just say thank you because you just gave me an enormous gift, which was your time. And I know that this was a little bit like drinking out of a fire hose for you as we go through this process. My anticipation, Madam Chair, is that in the future, when we have these items either on the work session or chairperson venue, when we have these on the, on the regular meeting, that we will not have these broad overviews. You'll have more in-depth reporting from the individual work groups so that you know the work that they're doing. We will try to keep those tight and focused for you. We just knew that this first time right out of the gate, that we really wanted to make sure that we could provide a, a pretty broad overview and, and more than anything else, really give you the opportunity to get your questions out on the table and for us to provide some response to you. So again, I thank you for the gift of time and I really thank you for the gift of your questions and your, your concerns that you've raised.
Thanks, Stephen. And, you know, I know all, all of us are very grateful to all of the work that everyone's been doing before March 13th, but most especially I know everyone's workload has ramped up since then. And I think the plans moving forward, it sounds like you're taking into account a lot of variables and and I think too, the important message needs to continue to be the flexibility piece because we might start at a low or a no transmission rate and one week after school starts, it's changed and we're back into something new. So you know, that part of it, we don't have control over, but I think as long as we have the plans in place to be able to shift when we need to, you know, that, that to me is the most important part.
Thank you.
So, all right, let me, hang on, I'm in full screens. I have to find my agenda here.
Our next one is student academic standards.
There we go. Okay. Thanks.
Vicki, I think I'm turning this one over to you and your team.
Thanks. And I'm looking for Nancy's shirts here.
He was on.
I'm here.
Keep track of all the squares here.
Thanks. Nancy, we didn't get much of a chance to prepare for this, so I apologize, but I suspect you're ready to go.
I'm ready to ride. Let me know what you need.
If you could talk through what we're presenting to the board tonight, posting of standards, if you could just give a general summary.
Sure, absolutely. By state statute, we, every July, the board, we have to present to the board and to the public, the state standards that we use across the district to rate our curriculum. And nothing has changed. We use the Wisconsin state standards, but we also pair them with the national standards. But as long as you meet the Wisconsin standards, that's the body of standards in which we base all of our work. We just compare it also to the national standards to make sure we have the optimum rigor in the standards we're teaching for, for our essential learning. And that comes to you every July. It has to be posted. So the Wisconsin academic standards are this body of standards that we use in the Green Bay area public school district. Some districts rate their own standards and they have to be approved by DPI. We just adopted the state standards.
Thanks, Nancy. Are there any questions from board members? And I do know that the ELA standards are brand new. They were just approved last month or this month, anyway, within the last month. So, so this document automatically puts us into the 2020 standard, updated standards.
That is correct. And we'll be aligning our essential documents to those new standards. We're ecstatic because there's so much of those new standards have such a base of equity in them. And also the foundations for learning. Our phonics and phonemic awareness that is pulled, it's extrapolated out and called out. So we're ecstatic about where we're sitting as far as the district and also the work that lies ahead is right in line with the work that we're doing in the district.
Yep. Thanks.
You bet.
All right. We'll move that forward to our next.
All right. I think we got everybody on mute here. So I apologize for that. Where are we at here?
Sorry, I'm on mute. My, my mouse just broke, died and I don't have a battery. So I'm, I'm doing things with a touch.
There you go.
So yeah, we're, we're doing the field trip policy and rule.
All right.
I'll turn that over to either you or Melissa.
Yep. So we've got two things there. We've got the, the policy itself. We have the rule that goes along with it. If you had a chance to, to take a peek at it, obviously we had some pretty significant challenges last spring with field trips and implications for students and their families. And so you'll see this as a responsive policy to that. Melissa, defer to you for any additional input or feedback for the board.
I'm trying to get myself off my things, Steve. I, you did a great job introducing your first policy, so I have nothing else to add unless the board has questions.
Yeah, I appreciate this policy and, and one of the questions I have is, and I, it doesn't necessarily have to go into policy, but what, what are the mechanisms that we use to ensure that when our students are going on a field trip, that there is, obviously there's learning going to take place, and I think that's pretty clear in the policy. But what, what do we do to ensure that there's some accountability to that learning? I know I've been on with my three kids, many different field trips and, you know, sometimes there was very obvious direct accountability for learning. And other times it seemed rather casual and, and, and hit or miss and depended on the motivation of each student. And so I, I just wonder, you know, what, how, how we continue to do that. And I know we've improved that greatly over my time on the board in terms of ensuring that, but just that last step is what I'm asking about.
Good question. So, you know, field trips should clearly be articulated to classroom expectations and, and to the content in the classroom. And we expect that there is a direct tie-in to the work that's taking place in the classroom. And that experiential-based learning should be an enhancement to the work that's already taking place. So from an accountability standpoint, that really lives in a couple of different places. Individually, it lives with the teacher and their process for going through and aligning and delivering to, to their administrator, the rationale for the field trip. There's an opportunity then from a building site supervision for the administrators in the building to ensure that the work that is done to prepare for the field trip is in alignment with the content for the course and that when they return that they're putting it in place. So those would be the two primary areas of accountability there.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Andrew?
There you go.
Yep, there we go. Okay, I lost my head, so I have to charge it a little bit more. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So, you know, this, I, I think we did if, I, I hope there weren't any things that slipped through the, through the cracks. I, what I heard from, what I heard from people was, was all good. You know, this year we made the decision that we were just going to refund people in insurance or no insurance because we decided to cancel. And it was really before, although maybe only days before everything started to be canceled, but a couple of trips come to mind that were imminent in, in mid-March because of when our spring break is. This policy, this, this policy would say that the, in no instance will we refund monies to students even if, even if we cancel it. And I guess I'm just interested in a little more, a little more discussion about that. I mean, can't cancel for any reason, trip insurance coverage, you know, provide some protection, but it's also, it's also a profit center for these, for these companies. It's, it tends to be, you know, fairly expensive. So I guess I want a little bit more discussion about that. I think if it's one thing if you, if you don't, you know, if you don't feel like going, that's one thing. But if the district tells you, you can't go, even though nothing has legally prevented you from going, I, I thought it's worth some discussion.
And I, I think that's a good point. I think that, and I'll defer to the team that worked on this, but I think that the intent of the, the trip insurance component is to assure, ensure that students or parents don't get caught with a, a large investment for which they're unable to recoup those dollars. But as with any insurance, there's going to be a cost to it upfront. And I think the, the responsibility of the district is to make sure that we work with those staff members that are planning field trips to minimize that cost where they, where we count. But others who have participated in that, this work, feedback that you have for the board on that?
Yeah, as you know, it was a huge concern of parents and students this, this year. And there was no, the, the policy itself did not clearly define what would happen if a, a trip was canceled. Trips were arranged without having the legal department review any of the contracts. And as you know, some of the agencies do not have very good language in their contracts with regard, regards to trip insurance and the cancellations. So you are correct, Andrew, that in section E3 of the rule, that the district indicates that we will not refund money to students for canceled trips. And the reason will be because the cancel-for-any-reason insurance is what is going to be required for all of those trips.
And is that, is that in here? I, I saw that, I, I, I just didn't see where it was in here.
Yep, it is in. Let me find it for you.
I, I did see where it says, "The application must provide evidence of insurance coverage, including cancel-for-any-reason." Does that mean you have to elect it?
It's a requirement of the trip. It will be built into the cost of the trip.
Okay, so if I have, if I have further questions, they, they'd be very technical and I'll, I'll, I'll either ask you in, in between or prior or not. So.
Please feel, please feel welcome to submit those and we'll be happy to respond to them, Andrew.
I guess, do they, is it really canceled? I mean, does that, does that truly exist? I mean, if it truly exists, it's great, but I, I, I mean, I, I was helping someone look through theirs and they're optional cancellation product. Yes, it probably would have covered COVID if they purchased it, but a lot of stuff it wouldn't have covered. So are we going to be able to get that? Or are you gonna just, are you going to contact the provider and say, look, if, you know, if, if you're working with us, then you're gonna, you're going to offer it?
Oh, I, I can provide two answers to that. One is, yes, it actually does exist. The cancellation insurance that some of our families did sign up for did not cover COVID. So that the, the policies that they had signed up for would, did not provide refunds to them. It was really the work of my staff, Heather Nelson and Ellen Krieger, who worked tirelessly to get refunds back from a number of these companies. And through, through doing that, we have, you know, learned that there are some really great forthcoming transparent companies out there and some who are not so willing to give refunds to students and their families. And in working with the, the really good ones, Andrew, they talked about the cancel-for-any-reason insurance. It exists. It would have covered COVID. It would have covered, it covers every situation and that's why it's cancel-for-any-reason insurance. And the cost to students and their families is really minimal. So it's, it's something that we can build into the cost of trips. In addition to that, once this policy is approved, I've been working with Pete and Tim and Jake Elverson, and we are going to issue an RFP for a company who will work with the district to do student trips so that we are not dealing with companies anymore who are not providing the best terms for our students and that we are having the, the most advantaged, advantageous field trips for our students and their families at the, at the best cost. The, again, going to Brenda's question about the learning components. There's, there's many, many options and some are really good and we want to make sure we're providing those to our students.
All right. Just want to make sure though, I would hate to, you know, I would hate to lose out on a company that actually is one of the good companies who worked with us, but hasn't been able to, maybe they don't have the right, presumably most of these places have third-party partners for their insurance. So I would hate to lose one of the good options just because they don't have that piece together and, you know, maybe we can help them find that piece, or maybe I'm overestimating. Or maybe I'm overestimating, and there are so many options with good insurance that you can find whatever you want at reasonable prices with a good cancel-for-any-reason policy. And if that's the case, then I think we're, I think we're fine, you know.
The smaller companies were the ones that were more freely offering the information about the cancel-for-any-reason insurance.
Okay.
All right, seeing no other questions, then we'll move that forward to our meeting next week. The last is just a quick conversation about the status of redesign 2020. And I'll turn that over to Mr. Merly.
Yes, thank you. So I really wanted to put this on there just because I know I've gotten a couple of questions via email and a couple of community comments about it. I just wanted to reiterate that I understand that prior to my arrival as the pandemic onset came in March, that there was intended work that was going to take place in the spring, that the district was unable to follow through on that because of the transition out of the in-person instruction format. I just, more than anything else, wanted to make sure that you knew that this is on my radar. I know that this is important work that we need to do as a district and a community and that we fully intend to revisit that. Right now, we're all hands on deck getting ready for the fall. But like I said, more than anything else, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that this is on my radar. I've been gathering resources about it so that I can take an active part in this as we move through the summer. And then collectively, I can work with you to help develop a timeline for that so that we can complete this work.
Rhonda? Thank you for that. Is it possible then to take what you just said and put it into an attachment and include it in the agenda? I personally would have liked to have seen that to begin with. It seems like we have a problem, for some reason, putting attachments in when anytime you see redesign on the agenda, it just never seems to be an attachment included. It's like, I feel like a broken record. But that is very important information that a lot of families are waiting to hear. A lot of staff are waiting to hear. And I think that's something that should be out there right away when the agenda comes out. It's important to know because not everybody watches these board meetings, and we know this. So I'd just like to ask for that if possible. Because your statements are actually, I mean, that's technically, that's news, as people would say, right? That's news. It is. I believe it is. And I'd like to see that out there for the public to be able to absorb and not have to watch the meeting or be told in some other way. Thank you.
Eric has his hand up. Yes, sir.
Steve, did that, didn't this message already go out to all staff? I don't know about parents, but I think I was working on an email that went out to all staff with this message. And we were putting it here as almost a second or a third option to make sure that people saw it. But I don't know about parents.
Yeah, that I'm not sure about. I, yes, the staff, I'm not sure about the parent piece. And maybe Rhonda, even more to your point from a general standpoint. I know you that President Vandenhove and Vice President Shelton and I had a wonderful discussion during the executive committee meeting about the role of our board agendas and posting timelines for posting attachments and summaries on the agenda items. So our goal is some significant improvements in those areas as we move forward with our next set of meetings.
Great. Okay, anybody else with comments? All right, and that concludes our report. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Brenda. That concludes our teaching and learning work session. Then we will transition over to the organizational support work session. And that will be facilitated by Andrew Becker. And...
Our first item on there looks to be our college and career readiness coordinator job description.
Yep, my audio is much better if I'm on headset. So do we have any, anything to present on this job description?
Defer to Vicki if there's anything that we want to add for the group as a whole beyond the job description itself.
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay, any, Rhonda, go ahead.
Can we note for the record that it's not a new position? It's an existing position?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Okay, so what are, what are we changing?
Is it an existing position? Or is it, I thought it was, it's a grant-funded position. Is it existing or is it new? Because it's working directly with middle schools. Isn't that correct?
You're muted. Okay.
Yeah, sorry. I'm sorry. That's, that's correct. That is correct. This is a three-year position. It's grant-funded, and it's to support our middle schools. Thank you.
Okay, so is it identical to another position of the same title, but it's a separate job description reflective of the fact that it's a grant, temporary grant-funded position? Is that why this is here, or do we not have a position by this title?
We don't have one by this specific title. We have a couple that are very similar, but this one narrowly focuses on the ACP.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Vicki, can you, can you tell us what, can you just say for the record what ACP stands for so people know?
Oh, right. It's, no, that's academic and career planning. Thank you. You're welcome.
Somebody has to take over for Katie's job, right, Rhonda?
Um, Brenda?
I do have a question. It's grant-funded for three years. If it's a position that, that is, you know, is something we deem critical and important and they're doing great work, I assume that there would be some potential to continuing the position after those three years?
Yes, we would continue to evaluate. But as should be our practice regularly, if it's grant-funded, we would need to take a look at our financial responsibility.
And so when you hire this person, then they're fully aware of the fact that it's a guaranteed three years and reevaluate after that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I will move that forward. And the only other, the only other item we would have are placeholder for future agenda items. Do you have any requests? Rhonda?
I don't have any requests for an agenda item, and I'm not sure if we can speak to this right now, but I'm just gonna ask anyway. You can cut me off. I can't ask this. When are we considering meeting in person? I think it's important to think about that considering we're asking or we're, we're speaking to having people come into our buildings, and we're still meeting virtually. And I know the city council is meeting, I believe, next week in a hybrid fashion. They had an option to do that as well. I'm just wondering if this would be at the time we could discuss that, or I just want to throw it out there.
Yeah, Rhonda, I appreciate that. I know you and I have talked a little bit about it. I did raise it with Steve, and we'll kind of take it into consideration. At our meeting next week, we'll talk about our retreat. It's possible that we discuss it there. So I think just continuing to monitor it, it's constantly on our radar. And we'll, I don't know, I have a great answer for you right now, but we'll talk about it.
So Melissa, can we talk about, can I ask a question about that here?
No, but I'm sorry. I think you knew what I was gonna say.
No, actually, I didn't.
Oh, okay. My other colleagues did. No, but I think it's something that we could put on Steve's report for next week because Eric and Christina will have had a meeting with Steve this week, and they could provide an update, and we could have discussion next week.
Yeah, and Rhonda, I'm sorry if I misled you in a conversation. I was picturing the agenda of the regular meeting where calendar is a preset agenda topic where you'd probably have some latitude on that, and I forgot that this wasn't, wasn't that. So we don't have calendar. I think, I mean, we go, we'll just make extra sure by putting it on Steve's report so there's no question at all. But if we had a calendaring topic as opposed to an agenda-setting topic, then I would think we probably could, but.
No, I'm aware of that, which is why I asked, because I just wanted to.
Yep. So, so no one is asking about an agenda item? And...
I am. I'd like to make sure that we put our reentry plan on there. Just remember, I'd like to have it as a placeholder for our work sessions moving forward. So if you would indulge me on that, my goal will be to have members of the various working groups provide updates for you as we're moving forward.
Steve, does that include next week? So board meetings and work sessions, or are you just talking about work session?
I'm talking about both. Obviously, the board meeting for next week was, was already set. I'm sure we'll have an update because we'll be a week into it. But I'm willing to forego next week. But I'd really ask that in subsequent weeks that we, subsequent meetings, we have that on the agenda, please.
Steve, you can put it on your report, I mean, obviously with Christina and Eric, but it would be permitted on your report.
Can I, I actually didn't hear what, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, what you requested to have on there.
An update on our planning process?
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to have some of the teams be able to come in and present to you so you can hear directly from the people that are working on it.
So if we're not, and I'm okay either way, I, if there's people ready on the, if there's, if there's people ready with something new to share next week, I'd be interested in hearing it. But just to, this just kind of, this just kind of set in for me as I looked over at the calendar. If there's, there is, there are two regular board meetings and one regularly scheduled work session prior to the scheduled start of school.
Correct.
So it's not, it's not like there's six of these to rotate. Obviously, it's our most important task is looking at a safe reopening, but there's, there's not, not that many of these meetings left. Okay, anything else? All right, I'll turn it back, I'll conclude this report, and I'll turn it back over to Eric for the adjournment.
Thanks so much, Andrew. Appreciate it. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
So move second.
Beth?
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
Vandenhove?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Sitnikow?
Hi.
Pass seven zero. That concludes our work session. Have a great week, everybody. We'll see you next Monday.
Congrats, Steve. You got through the first meeting.
Thanks all for a great meeting. I appreciate it.
Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call the special board meeting to order. We'll start with roll call. Beth, can you kick us off?
Billy, good morning. Becker? Sitnikow?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Vandenhove?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Warren?
She was gonna try to call in, but she, oh, there you are.
I'm able to be here. Yep, thought I'd be on the roll, but not yet.
Thank you. And McCoy?
Here.
All right, all seven board members are present. So we'll jump into the agenda, and the first is a motion on the retirements of staff.
I move that the retirement of staff is presented be approved.
Second.
Beth?
Warren?
Hi.
Becker?
Thank you. Each other, yeah.
Okay, McCoy?
Hi.
Sitnikow?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
Vandenhove?
Hi. Pass seven zero.
I move that the resignation of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Beth?
Smith? Shelton?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Vandenhove?
Hi.
Sitnikow?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Pass seven zero.
I move that the employment of Eric Miller as Director of College Career and Community Readiness. Let's see here. Twelve months at District Office Building now, the salary of $94,902 be approved.
Second.
Beth?
McCoy?
Hi.
Vandenhove?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Smith? Sorry, I'm sitting. Sitnikow?
Hi.
And Shelton?
Hi.
Pass seven zero.
I move that the employment of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Beth?
Sitnikow?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Vandenhove?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
Becker?
Said I, I don't know if his headset's not working.
Okay, thank you.
All right, looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Beth?
Hey, Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Shelton?
Hi.
Vandenhove?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Sitnikow?
Hi.
All right, and that is the end of our special board meeting. Thanks, everybody. Under five minutes.
Have a good day.
Have a good day.
Bye.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.